To our formal meeting, going to call this the order and our ramification tonight will be by Pastor Jimmy Coats from Christ Community Church. Welcome.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for tonight. We thank you for our leaders here. And in a world that is so divided in so many ways, politics being one of them, Lord, I, I know the folks here have the same desire, and that is to lead our city, to be a city that is a safe place, a place that is welcoming, a safe that cares about our kids, cares about our citizens, Lord. So Father, I pray for wisdom for them. I pray for us as voters to have wisdom. And God, we thank you that they desire to see people live their best lives, Lord. So be with them tonight and further. Thank you for your love for us, and I pray that you would guide our leaders, Lord. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. And may we have a moment of silence for all of those heroes who paid the ultimate price for our safety. And thank you. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clark, do we have a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, all present.
All are present. Do I have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
Second.
Okay.
One second. The vote is open. Vice Mayor, thank you. By a vote of ten to zero, you've certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to recess.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the informal and formal sessions of September ninth, 2023, and formal session of September twenty-six, 2023? Okay.
Give us just one second, please. The vote is open. By a vote of ten to zero, you've approved the minutes estimated.
Okay, thank you. This much, at this time, Councilmember Bellucci has a very, very special proclamation to his fan club.
Mayor, correction, I'm, I'm part of their fan club.
Did oh, yes.
And I would just like to say as the liaison to the Arts and Humanities Commission that it's a great honor to read this proclamation, and I thank you, Mayor, for that opportunity. But I know that the sentiments expressed here are shared by the mayor and the member, all the members of this body, because we just prioritize arts, culture, and humanity as one of our top city council priorities. So with support of the body and their endorsement, I read this on behalf of us all. Whereas the month of October is recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts and cultural organizations, communities, and states across the country, as well as by the White House and Congress since nineteen ninety-three, and whereas the arts and humanities enhance and enrich the lives of every American through education, recreation, and creative work, and by inspiring the imagination of humankind, and whereas the arts are accessible to all, and the arts and humanities are an essential component of quality of life for individuals, families, communities, and our nation, and whereas the many, for many, the opportunity to create and share art in its many forms is as vital to health and wellness as oxygen, and Virginia Beach's vibrant arts and community provides a myriad of opportunities for creative expression for all, starting as children and continuing throughout all of our years, and whereas the nonprofit arts industry strengthens our national economy by generating one hundred and thirty-five billion dollars in total economic activity annually, two-point-two billion dollars in government revenue, and by supporting the full-time equivalent of four-point-one million jobs. And whereas the city of Virginia Beach established an Arts and Humanities Commission in nineteen seventy-nine, and the commission has remained steadfast in promoting excellence in the arts and humanities by initiating and supporting programs, activities, and policies that inspire, nurture, and reflect the cultural diversity within our city, and whereas countless residents and visitors experience the best of Virginia Beach, thanks to our local nonprofit arts and humanities organizations and the thousands of artists who share their talents with our community. There now therefore, Robert M. Dyer, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, hereby proclaims October, two thousand twenty-three, as Arts and Humanities Month in the city of Virginia Beach. And I must observe, thank you, I must observe that this is one of the most outstanding and robust demonstrations of, of support for a cause that I have seen inside this chamber, and I personally thank each and every one of you for all of your many contributions to arts, humanities, to culture, to making our lives better through creative expression in the city of Virginia Beach. Thank you so much. And Mayor and I would like to present this, and what is, who's?
Gave you one more wait.
Cindy, say a few words. Thanks you all.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, and fellow, or additional council members, good evening. I'm Dr. Cynthia Romero. I'm Chair of the Arts and Humanities Commission, and on behalf of all my fellow commissioners, past and present, and all of our arts partners across the city, I stand, and yes, I am standing, to thank, to thank the city of Virginia Beach, City Council, for its ongoing support for the arts and culture in our community. We have countless artists, arts professionals, volunteers, organizations, patrons, and audiences who make our city a diverse, vibrant, and thriving community. Tonight, the faces in this room represent only a fraction of the creative minds, bodies, hearts, and souls who are proud to make Virginia Beach their home. One of the many organizations that fosters the creative minds, especially of the youth, is Virginia Musical Theater. Here to provide some remarks, it is my pleasure to introduce a high school colleague of mine, but also the Chair of the Board of Virginia Musical Theater, Mr. George Melnick.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, and the Honorable Members of City Council. My name is George Melnick, Jr. and as an acquaintance to many of you, a local business owner, president of the Virginia Musical Theater, and a voice of the Coalition of Arts Advocacy groups here in Virginia Beach, I would like to begin by thanking you for the proclamation issued tonight, naming October as National Arts and Humanities Month in Virginia Beach. It is our hope this proclamation will bring attention to the arts and help the community appreciate the value we collectively bring to our great city. As we look at other cities in our country that are thriving, it is no surprise that the arts play a prominent role in their success. Their local governments see the value arts groups bring to their community. Each of you know the added benefit we provide in Virginia Beach, and we are grateful for your support and assistance. We are all aware that when businesses look at relocation, they want to know that there is an investment in a diverse way of life. Strong schools, sufficient infrastructure, and thriving arts communities are crucial to our city's growth and continued success. It is no secret the arts struggle to be financially viable from season to season, despite their ticket sales, fundraising efforts, and loyal patrons. Our hope is that you will increase your financial support by growing your investment in the arts to help bridge this gap. The additional funding will help us meet our financial requirements and allow us to continue to provide the arts to our community. Our message is simple. On behalf of all the arts advocacy, advocacies here tonight, I ask that you please make arts funding a priority. Virginia Beach will be better for it. As the husband of an elected official, I understand firsthand the sacrifices you make for our great city. Thank you for your time, consideration, and continued investment in all that makes Virginia Beach the city we are proud to call home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I close by simply saying that I would encourage everyone to experience art this month and every month. See a show, visit a gallery, listen to a musical number, watch a stage dance presentation, head to a museum, compose poetry, or create visual art, whatever the arts inspire you to do, to express your thoughts, to share your joy, and to invite others to do the same. Together, we can infect each other with the positive impact of arts and culture throughout Virginia Beach. And at this time, I would like to invite all of my arts and humanities commissioners and the arts and culture community to come forward and have a photo with our city council members. Thank you.
Thank you. No, I think we could stand right here and they can stand in front of us.
Should we get closer, though?
No, we're good. Oh, you got it. Hey, good to see you. All of Michael's friends are here. Hey, good to see you. Hey, good to see you all. You got it.
Excuse me all, we're gonna need to make at least two rows.
Hey, good to see you.
Kate is over here, too. This is a charismatic, beautiful, artsy group.
This is historic.
Okay. Looking right here, everybody smile, nobody blink. And I'll take at least a thousand just to make sure. And then the rest of the paparazzi can ham it.
All right, thank you all. Appreciate it. Hey, good to see you all. Here we go. Time for the surprise. Hey, God bless you, man. Hey, good to see you. Hey. You got it. Okay, that's great. Sergeant Philipone, can you pick up the mic a little bit? Frankie, while you're there, resolution. Whereas native Virginian Frankie Philipone has been a police officer in Virginia since two thousand and three, first in Newport News and then in Virginia Beach, where he's been since two thousand and six, mostly serving as a sergeant. And whereas Sergeant Philipone started boxing in two thousand, and after a successful amateur career, turned pro in two thousand and eight, accomplishing a great deal in his tenure both as a professional boxer and as a full-time police officer. And whereas training hard in the gym and making an impact on the streets, Sergeant Philipone has aspired to encourage a positive perception of law enforcement and build strong relationships with the community through boxing. His boxing and law enforcement careers have always been about making an impact, changing hearts and minds, and building meaningful relationships. And throughout his career, Sergeant Philipone has fought for more than just championships. He has raised money for breast cancer research and helped fundraising for a three-year-old affected by cancer. He has spoken at several youth leadership academies aimed at help at-risk youth, and has volunteered his time to mentor those same at-risk youth. And whereas Sergeant Philipone has consistently demonstrated outstanding dedication in our community through his exemplary police work, his commitment to building trust and fostering positive relationships and ensuring the safety and well-being of our residents is a, is a model to all who serve in the law enforcement profession. Whereas Sergeant Philipone is highly respected within the Virginia Beach Police Department for his unwavering professionalism, strong work ethic, and exemplary leadership skills. His dedication to upholding the highest standards of law enforcement has set a commendable example for his employees. Sergeant Philipone's commitment to teamwork and community policing make him a valuable and respected member of our force. And whereas Sergeant Philipone has received several awards in recognition of his efforts for both policing and boxing, including Hampton Roads Top Cop, VBPD Officer of the Year, Champion for Children, and Virginia Beach Hometown Heroes, and the sweetest soul of boxing. And whereas on this day, we honor a pillar of our community who deserves our deepest gratitude and respect for all that he has accomplished for his earnest efforts to serve our citizens. Therefore, it be resolved that the Virginia Beach City Council pause in its deliberations to express its appreciation to Sergeant Frank the Freight Train Philipone for his commitment and service to our city and the Commonwealth. And this is adapted by the entire city council members of Virginia Beach.
Yeah, I wish I would have known this, but it didn't take a detective to start seeing my family in this crowd to know that something else was going on.
Well, you know, Goldrum Powell said, surprise, surprise, surprise. Yeah, let's go in here, so.
Yeah, my dad's in trouble, so. Well, I don't even know where to start. Yeah, it's been twenty years since I started this police career, and I actually, to be honest, I didn't even want to do, become a police officer. I only joined because a friend wanted to join, and then when he didn't get in the process, I, I said, what do I do next? And as you see, my lovely wife, it was my fiancee, said, what do you got to lose? And it's at that moment when God directed my path to, to help the community, help citizens answer just the simplest questions. So I will tell you that throughout this career, I just live by one model, right? Sometimes it's not just about building bridges with the community. Bishop T.D. Jake says, sometimes you have to be the bridge, and that's what I strive to do. So I appreciate this. I'm humbled, I'm honored, and I look forward to serving you all in, in continued capacity.
And Frankie, you are why we are considered a city of heroes. Thank you. God bless you and your family.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, the people's business, off the public hearings. I'll tell you, I'll read the speaker's policy first. Do we have any speakers? Let me just say, public hearings, Declaration of Sale of Excess Property, city property.
The first.
And square feet on Ferry Point Road.
There are no speakers, sir.
And then Declaration of the Sale of Excess Property on Dominion Energy Coastal Virginia Beach Offshore Wind Project.
Yes, we have three speakers. The first speaker is Karen Forjay. And then after Ms. Forjay is Lori Acker.
Do me a favor. Before you go, Karen, I just want to take the time, don't start her time yet. I just want to read the speaker policy first.
Okay.
I want to remind everyone that the City Council Speaker Policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for ten minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have to three minutes to speak on a single item. Speakers are reminded that comments during this formal session of the meeting must be limited to the subject item that is being considered by council at the time you are called. For items placed on the consent agenda, a speaker will have up to three minutes to address any single item. If a speaker wishes to address multiple consent agenda items, the speaker will have a cumulative total of six minutes to address those items. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items they have signed up to address. And finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussion and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the City Council wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Thank you. Thank you for your indulgence.
Sure, thank you. I'm Karen Forjay, and I'm the Executive Director of LR Now, and I am pleased to speak in support of the sale by the city of the easement property to Dominion Energy for the transmission lines for the Seaval Offshore Wind Project. Through the Clean Economy Act, Virginia has made a critically important and ambitious commitment that by 2045 Dominion will produce one hundred percent renewable energy, renewable electricity. The Seaval Offshore Wind Project is an important part of the portfolio of energy projects that will help them meet this commitment. In coastal Virginia, we are aware what is at stake for us as a community if we do not make this important transition to renewable energy. Sea level rise and flooding are already changing our city, and those challenges will continue to escalate. Seaval is the first offshore wind project permitted in federal waters and establishes Hampton Roads as a leader in this growing industry. As I know you are aware, this is a tremendous economic opportunity for our region that can bring many well-paying jobs to our area. Dominion has done a good job of outreach to the community, but we know that the construction of those transmission lines will impact many residents, and we all must commit to communication with the affected neighborhoods. In addition, many trees will be lost to this construction. Dominion is compensating the city for the ecosystem services that these trees provide. I urge you to make a commitment to replacing, to the greatest extent possible, all the trees lost in the same areas of the city. It has taken us many years to get to this point, and we are very excited to see this project going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Lori Acker, and then John Larson.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Lori Acker. I have lived in Virginia Beach for the past forty-six years and currently reside at twenty-seven twenty-one Spring Haven Drive in the Castleton subdivision just off London Bridge Road. Our home sits directly on the Dominion Energy easement, where current overhead transmission lines exist, and also where the proposed Seaval project lines will be constructed. Back in nineteen ninety-nine, when we built our home, we were aware of both the proposed Southeastern Expressway easement as well as the Dominion Energy easement. It was our hope, of course, that we would continue to enjoy that peaceful setting and the background of the forested wetlands for years to come. We're very conscious of the environmental impact of any deforestation and wetland disruption, particularly since we backed to the West Net Creek. For the past twenty-four years, we've been able to enjoy a multitude of bird, reptiles, and animal species. We're avid gardeners and have planted dozens of native plant species to attract birds, butterflies, and pollinators. We follow Dominion's recommendations for appropriate plants to satisfy the easement vegetation restrictions, as twenty feet of our yard is actually within the Dominion easement. Our yard is quite simply for us, our sanctuary. So you might think that I come opposing the Seaval project. While we certainly hope for a different route to avoid the huge loss of mature native trees and the impact to wildlife and songbirds, we are aware that this is the most logical route from the oceanfront near Dam Neck to the Fentress area. I would like to commend Dominion for their community engagement and their public outreach. I first met with Dominion's Rob Richardson in Communications back in March of two thousand twenty-one, when the proposed routes were first made public. Since that time, Rob and his colleagues have been in regular contact with us to answer all of my exhaustive questions and concerns. He and his colleagues even visited our home so they could view the easement and explain how the transmission towers might affect us. They have not failed to allay any concern we have and continue to make themselves available to the community. In addition, they have met with our Castleton Homeowners Association board members on several occasions. Their communication during the project's beginning has been thorough, timely, Their communication during the project's beginning has been thorough, timely, extremely informative. Door hangers, postcards, other mailings, numerous open houses, I'm pleased to say that I attended everyone, learned something new at every opportunity, held nearby and during convenient hours. Their GeoVoice tool is an incredibly versatile resource to view every aspect of the planning and submit any questions you have directly into the tool. Their studies on the impact to bats, whales, marine life, and other songbirds are available on the website. I just wish more residents would have come out to see how positive relationships can be built and learn more about the project. In closing, I would like to echo Councilwoman Henley's recommendation on.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The last speaker is John Larson.
Hey, good evening. How are you? Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. John Larson with Dominion Energy, and I really wanted to come here tonight and thank you for your consideration of the easement, proposed easement that you have before you. Appreciate the time and effort you put into it and the professionalism of the staff as we worked with them to go through the process of that. Great work and very diligent work by everyone involved. This is a really important project, as you've heard. If you think about it from environmental impacts, one project that can power 25% of the homes in Virginia with no emissions and no fuel is pretty phenomenal. But just as critical as that generation is, is the transmission lines to connect that to the grid, so that power can be delivered to the homes and the businesses. Along with that comes great job opportunity. Right now, 750 Virginians are working on the project, with 500 of them being from the Hampton Roads area. We've worked very diligently to go out and make sure that that's a consideration and continue to grow the economy. The project's been through not one, but two regulatory approvals. The State Corporation Commission of Virginia approved the project in 2022, and then just this past week, the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management issued its final environmental impact statement for the project, which was a tremendous milestone, in which they looked at the environmental and safety aspects of both all the onshore and offshore parts of the project. So very pleased that that was able to move forward. You know, as we look at it and that outreach, we'll continue to do outreach and engage with homeowners, homeowners associations, and businesses along the transmission route. We've already sent out over 170,000 pieces of mail and done 12 open houses, and we'll continue with that great work that we have and look forward to engaging. So while this all started really in 2020 and 2021, it seems like it was a long time ago, but actually, things have moved very quickly, and we look forward to moving ahead with the project, and we thank you and look forward to working with the city. Hey, thank you. I think we've got a win-win here. Thank you very much.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, is there any speakers on multiple items on the consent?
No, sir.
Okay, at that point, Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, everything is on consent. Under ordinances, resolutions. Number one, resolution to direct the city attorney to file a petition for a writ of special elections, ready to fill the vacancy for District One, with Ms. Henley voting no. Number two is a resolution to direct the city attorney to file a petition for a writ of special elections, ready to fill the vacancy in the sheriff's office. Number three, the resolution to establish partnership between indigenous tribes and the city requested by Vice Mayor Wilson and council members Berlucci, Remick, Ross Hammond, Rouse, Shulman, and Taylor. Number four is the ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a short-term lease agreement with Lumos Telephone LLC, ray four strands of dark fiber to the city's communication network. Number five is the ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a lease for city-owned property for up to five years at Virginia Beach Farmers Market, Suite 815, Ray Beach and Seafood LLC. Number six is the ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a lease for city-owned property for up to five years at Virginia Beach Farmers Market, Building Seven Spaces, Seven and Eight, Ray Creek Moors Place LLC. Number seven is the ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a lease for city-owned property for up to five years at Virginia Beach Farmers Market, Building Two, Space Eleven, Ray Kempsville Florist and Gift Shop, Inc. Number eight is the ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a lease for city-owned property for up to five years at Virginia Beach Farmers Market, A Building One, Space Ten, and B, the Guard House Building, Ray Seasons Best Bakery LLC. Number nine is a resolution in support of offering incentives to prospective offers responding to the Naval Air Station Oceana request for proposals for competitive out grant. Number 10 is the ordinance to authorize and convert a part-time position to a full-time position in the opioid abatement program within the Department of Human Services. Number 11 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $9,886,400 from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation to the FY 2023-24 Department of Public Works operating budget and transfer a pay-go funding to Capitol Project 10551, Stormwater Green Infrastructure, Reconstruction of Marsh Land Terraces in Back Bay. Congratulations, District Two. Number 12, ordinances to accept and appropriate $846,661 from the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA to the FY 2023-24 Fire Department operating budget, ray continued operations of the Virginia Task Force Two Urban Search and Rescue Team. Number 13 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $456,860 from Eastern Virginia Medical School to the FY 2023-24 Parks and Recreation operating budget, ray supported the out-of-school time program. Number 14 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $275,000 from the Virginia Marine Resources Commission to the FY 2023-24 Department of Public Works operating budget, ray the removal and disposal of 18 abandoned and derelict vessels and authorize sub-recipient grant to the vessel disposal and reuse foundation. Number 15 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $170,425.05 and additional $4,409.70 from the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA to the FY 2023-24 Fire Department operating budget for expenses relating to the mobilization of Virginia Task Force Two, ray flooding in Vermont. Number 16 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $35,412.83 and additional $1,062.38 from the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA to the FY 2023-24 Fire Department operating budget for expenses related to the mobilization of Virginia Task Force Two, ray Hawaii wildfires. Number 17 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $27,500 from the Governor's Agriculture and Forestry Industry Development Fund Infrastructure Grant Program and authorize $27,500 from the Federal, the General Fund Reserve for Contingencies to the Virginia Beach Development Authority to provide the required local grant match for the installation of a new freezer and additional irrigation equipment at Cullifer Farm. Number 18 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $10,174 from the Virginia Beach Library Foundation to the FY 2023-24 Public Library operating budget, ray the purchase of iPads for the children's spaces at various library branches. And number 19 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $9,595 from the Virginia State Police to the FY 2023-24 Police Department operating budget, ray reimbursement of equipment purchased to investigate or prevent auto theft as part of the Help Eliminate Auto Theft, the heat program. Number 20 is the ordinance to appropriate $43,231.90 from the sale of equipment to the FY 2023-24 Fire Department operating budget for the Virginia Task Force Two team, ray the purchase of new vehicles. Number 21, ordinance to appropriate $5,000 for fee revenue to the FY 2023-24 Commonwealth Attorney operating budget, ray purchase supplies and support the operating of drug treatment court. Move for approval.
Do I have a second? Second. Okay. Any discussion? Vote's open.
By a vote of 10 to 0, noting Ms. Henley's nay vote on item I, I'm sorry, K1, the consent agenda has been approved as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, thank you. Okay, appointments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For beaches and waterways, advisory commission to appoint Robert C. Mandago, representing District One. The Community Criminal Justice Board to appoint Sheriff Indy Rocky Holcomb. The Deferred Compensation Board to appoint Sheriff Indy Rocky Holcomb. The Historic Preservation Commission to appoint Thomas J. Morgan. Parks and Recreation Commission to appoint Stephen A. Rockefeller, representing District 10, and Sebastian Johnson, representing the student member. And the Process Improvement Committee appoint Donna Speller Turner. And the Southside Network Authority reappoint Vice Mayor Rosemary Wilson, representing the voting member, and Pedro Wallace, representing the alternate member. And for the Virginia Beach VA 250 Committee to appoint Charles Ball, representing Edington Education Field, Lynda Carrington, representing Cultural Group, Alfaeus Juning, representing Historical Group, Sharon Felton, representing Education Field, Patrick Hanan, representing Historical Group, Joanne House, representing the Historical Group, Kevin Catwinkle, Ellen Becky Libis, representing Cultural Group, Kristi Lyons, representing Historical Group, Stephen Mansfield, representing University College, Christopher Bezinski, representing University College, Christine Trock, representing Education Field, Michael Winner, James B. Wood, representing Historical Group.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Vote?
The vote is open.
Okay. All right, the vote is open.
Second. Now that they have to be seconded. Councilmember Remick and Councilmember Berlucci, may I have your vote, please? Thank you. By a vote of 10 to 0, you have appointed those as Vice Mayor Wilson read.
Okay, at this point, is there any unfinished business? New business. Okay, we're gonna adjourn into open mic.